Please stand.
I'd like to leave you to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're the boss of this tonight.
Okay. Now, I've got the Zoom here, and I have the agenda up on my phone. I don't think we have a printout of the agenda.
Ah, okay.
I have the agenda here also.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Do you want to go by this?
Sure. Here, my, here's the agenda.
And then we need to probably add for the, to discuss, do you feel to, we should add to a discuss the, an executive session?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
And to the agenda, I have on old business to add, under old business, to something about the Meadowee Community Park. And then, under new business, I have from Rutland Regional Planning Commission, the Housing Navigator Program. So both of those items, I would like to add to the agenda.
Okay. And we'll have an executive session for personnel at the end of the meeting.
After the public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you repeat those addition?
Um, you got the executive session for personnel. I forget the full blurb for it. And, um, under old business.
Old business.
Old business, we will have Meadowee Community Park. And then, under new business, we will have Housing Navigator Program.
Okay. Introduction. Tonight, we have Rich Hewlett, Jessica Van Or, Bob Jones, I'm Mike Beecher, Deb Hawkins is filling in for Kristen, taking minutes. Anybody that wants to speak will have to please state your name before you, and sign in on the sheet before you speak. The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure a productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments will be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be a two-minute allotment for a comment for any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the Town Hall and available for anyone to review. So we've gone through addition or deletions, the approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll move that we approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Lisa Wright. Would you like to join us, please?
Hello, everybody. Can you?
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you fine, thank you.
Um, I just had a little trouble with my video. It seemed to muffle your voices, so if the video's a problem, I can turn that off and go back to just audio if that works better. Um, so I'm here to talk about two issues which are very much connected. One is new legislation that I came to talk to this board about when it was still in the legislative session, the H480 bill, now known as Act 68 of 2023. And this bill has been enacted into law. It changed quite a bit, as bills will tend to do in the legislature, but it still contains some, um, some rather concerning implementation schedules that the State Tax Department is supposed to develop for doing the statewide system of reappraisal. So the Vermont Assessors and Listers Association has issued a memo about this kind of talking points for our members to go to their select boards and inform them of this. So I'm going to read right from that memo, which you should have in your packet. And what we're concerned about is this being a, um, an assault on local control of the grand list, the grand list being the foundation of your local tax base. Currently, uh, where this bill is, uh, is in progress is with a $50,000 appropriation to conduct a study on removing the grand list from local municipal control and transferring that control instead to the state level via a single statewide reappraisal system overseen and run by the Rock Department of Taxes. So, uh, we are quite concerned about this, and particularly the language in H480, which states, "Upon completion of a reappraisal pursuant to this subsection, the property values set by the commissioner shall be binding on the municipal and the municipalities' municipal and statewide education grand list." So this is, this is very much a, uh, a no to, to that level of control the state taking over that, and there are so many questions with this, um, that, I mean, we can hope that this study is going to answer some of those, one of them being, how can we defend those values at local grievance, uh, at local tax appeals if we do not have the ultimate sign-off of those values? Um, it, it, it's, uh, really pretty significant and a far-reaching piece of legislation. So, um, VALLA, the Vermont Assessors and Listers Association, in cooperation with Vermont League of Cities and Towns and the Vermont Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association, wrote joint letters to both the, um, the sponsor of this bill, Emily Cornheiser, with the House of Representatives, House Ways and Means specifically, and to Craig Bolio, who is the Chair, Commissioner of the Vermont Department of Taxes. And basically, these letters are, um, really insisting upon meaningful stakeholder involvement, as in the town's input that is truly meaningful on how this new legislation will be implemented, and maintaining some local knowledge and local input, and ultimately a municipally-centric form of government. We are a municipal-based form of government in Vermont, and to remove the basis of our, um, our funding for everything our town does, from local control to the state, is of serious concern. So I won't belabor the, the point and stay on the soapbox too long about this, but I urge you to take a read of the legislation and the information I've presented you, and I would ask the board to consider maybe a letter in, in support of VALLA's and VLCT's letters to the powers that be, in this case, that they, at a minimum, take a serious stakeholder input regarding how they implement this. We'd like to see a committee approach to this study and reviewing the study, rather than a decision made in a vacuum in Montillier, in effect. You, you need to understand what's going on, boots on the ground. So that's what I have about that. I'm happy to answer questions if I can, if any of you have them about that legislation.
But, yeah, where else? Anybody in the public have any questions for Lisa? No, so far, I think we're, we're all set. Right now, you've covered that topic quite well, thank you.
Okay, so, so on to Politt and how this impacts Politt directly. So it's likely that any statewide reappraisal system will take a number of years to take effect. If I had to hazard a guess, we won't see any, any real meaningful change for three or four years at a minimum in this. And, um, in the meantime, uh, the town of Politt has been under a order to do a townwide reappraisal since 2022, and the numbers remain such, even though the trigger changed from the CLA, the Commodal Level of Assessment, to the COD, which is a measure of equity, but we remain, um, on, on the list for being ordered by the state to do a reappraisal. Now, when we talked about this, we originally got that letter from PBR stating that we were under order. We discussed the very, very limited availability of appraisal contractors to do this work, and that remains the case. I've been working since then and even before to try to, um, try to do something in cooperation with a number of my towns. Part of the problem with getting an appraisal contractor to work in Vermont is that our towns are so small, and there are no economies of scale, that to get a, a contractor to come from another area of the state or out of state to do this is just not cost-effective. And there are fewer and far between of the mom-and-pop-type appraisal contractors out there these days. So I have been in conversations with John Valente and John Vickery of Tyler Technologies about their availability to complete townwide reappraisals. I also approached another contractor, Vision Government Solutions, and they do not seem as interested in pursuing work in Vermont, but John Valente and Tyler Technologies are interested and potentially interested in contracting for a reappraisal with a completion date as early as 2026. And so the grouping that I'm talking about is each town will go out for their own contract, but will do it at the same time, allowing these, this firm or other firms that might bid, um, to kind of bring in a team to work on this, and to look at the greater, the broader amount of data that you'd have in, in cooperation with all of those towns, while not ignoring the local influences on value that might be unique to Politt, or even to neighborhoods and types of properties within Politt. When you do a reappraisal, you have to look at both. Also looking at doing a conversion to a common and more easily supported assessment program, the CAMA program. The program we have with ProVal, the support is, is really, um, it's not, it's not acceptable. It takes weeks to get an answer back from that, the support is just not there for what we, what we need, and, and I think we should look in a different direction moving into the future. So that's, um, that will be part of this bid as well. The other advantage of making those things common is when I try to recruit staff, and we're having more and more towns that are asking me to provide assessment services, and the model that I have is working very well, where I do the higher-level valuation services and have an assessor clerk, like Karen, or an assistant assessor, to, um, to do a lot of the more clerical work that doesn't require, um, a, a higher level of valuation skills. But to bring new people into this, when we have one town doing things this way, or another town doing it slightly different, differently, makes it very difficult to train a new person, particularly a new person who's going to have to cover probably multiple towns like I do, because most of your small towns don't need a full-time assessor or a full-time assessor clerk either. So, um, anyway, not to belabor the point, I think there are a lot of advantages to, to, um, to making standards and making more common, um, common approaches. And the state is in fact requiring us, and the federal requirement for a few years, to have common data fields that we will then extract and send to the, uh, the state grand list software. So, um, in conclusion, I think you have to go out to bid in Politt, and even if you weren't required to, for the, the size of this, I would recommend it to, you know, have, have options, hopefully. While you may only have one bidder, you've at least gone out to bid and, um, and, and put that, uh, put that out there in an RFP. So I'm, I'm, I'm here to ask the board to approve going out to bid with this RFP, um, and, um, hopefully getting some favorable responses, or at least one really solid response, and looking forward with a townwide reappraisal. Questions?
I guess my question would be, what's the timeline? When do you want to issue the RFP? When will it close?
So I do have that in the memo for ease of your, your minutes, so I'm hoping to have an RFP issued by early January 2024, um, even potentially out before the end of the year. And then I think particularly given the holidays and the new year, you should probably give people a month to get back to you. So the bid proposal would be due in early February, and you could then make a decision within a week or two of that time. And usually, the way this is handled with most towns, because most select board members aren't as knowledgeable of the questions that a, a reappraisal firm is going to ask of the, the town, although I certainly am happy to do this as more of a, a cooperative, collaborative approach. Often, that's headed up by the Lister's Office, where the Lister's issue the RFP, send it to, uh, the state has a list of approved appraisal firms, um, with the state of Vermont. We send it out to all of them, and then the Lister's Office would field any questions about the RFP, open the bids on the designated day, or open them with the select board. But in either case, um, you know, I would hope that the select board would take recommendations from, uh, from my office as far as which of those bid proposals kind of meet our needs best.
Frank has a question. Frank?
How much is the transition from the software we're using to the one that you prefer to use? How much is that going, would that be? And if, if it's costly, then is there any assistance from the state or grants that we can put that up? Because it's going after, we have to be on it. If it's going this year, it would have to be pretty soon figured out, because the budget's going to be submitted final before too long.
Well, yes and no to some of those questions. So, um, no to any state assistance that I know of, other than the fact that the state currently gives the towns $8.50, $8.50, that is, per parcel, per year towards reappraisal. And my understanding is that the town of Politt has been pretty diligent about putting those funds in a reappraisal fund. So we do have some funds available to do this. Our last reappraisal was 2017, so we've had some time for that money to accumulate. Will there be additional costs that the town will likely have to bear? Yes, there always are. You know, there are potential legal costs from tax appeals, there's more time for my office, um, you know, and the potential software conversion. I do have a quote from Patriot that the conversion, I don't have that in front of me. I do have it for, I've gotten it for various towns, and I can, I can certainly get that to the board, but the conversion, the one-time fee to convert the data was 6,000. So, and then our costs are pretty comparable for any state-of-the-art CAMA program, where you're talking typically, you know, 6,000 or more per year to maintain that software, particularly if you're cloud-based. I don't recommend that we go that way, so it'll be a little cheaper for us, more on the lines of 4,000 a year, but I can get you that quote that I have from, um, from Patriot Software for that conversion.
And that wasn't included? Was that, or was that not included in the budget request you gave to us about a month ago?
It was not, I think I may have mentioned it, it, it would typically come out of your reappraisal funds, if possible. I believe I did put in the cost of the annual cost of the software, that that might go up.
Because I remember there was something.
Starting 2025, so, um, so yes, that, that conversion would probably, that cost would probably be incurred in the fiscal year that you're putting it under budget for now, yes.
Lisa, I know we're, we're committed to, how, how committed are we if we receive one proposal and it's outrageously expensive to do the reappraisal? I know we're, we're being told that we need to do a reappraisal, but what, at what point do, can we refuse or just say it, that we can't even afford it?
I, I think, as, as far as it stands right now, you, you still have the ability to resist that. At some point, the state does have in the statute that they can withhold funding if you aren't making efforts to conduct a reappraisal once you're under order. But I think there's been some leniency just because of the limitations of contractors available to do it. So, yeah, we don't, we don't have to, I think it behooves us to go out to bid, but if the bid is not favorable, if we can't work out a, a deal that is workable for Politt, I don't think you're compelled to accept that. And, um, you know, that would be good feedback for the state to have, if, if that were the case. I'm, I'm hoping that the, this bid, that if we get the one, will be kind of in line with what is, is standard, which is on the order of like 110, 120 a parcel. So that's, that's just the cost of doing a reappraisal these days.
Thank you.
Frank?
You were indicating that you, a number of your towns that you're working to, might coordinate with the timing of this to make it more appealing for the, for the contractor. Is it possible the towns group together and get a better group deal because of those efforts?
It is possible. Trying to get towns to all go in on a common bid, I think, would be, um, quite difficult. I, I think this is a compromise solution that I'm, I'm accepting of each of our towns' independent thinking and, and autonomy, but at the same time, I, I think we, we need to get our mindset away from, everything that we do in our little towns is so unique. We can share data, we can share skills. You already share an assessor among five other towns. And honestly, the work that I do in Politt is not that much different than the work that I do in Truesberry, or Chittenden, or Pittsburgh. It's, um, it's still the job of being your assessor with all the same state laws that apply. The, the challenge for me is that I have three different software packages, and even among those towns that have the same software packages, they're implemented a little differently, which makes it very confusing to do the work, maintain the work, and supervise other people doing the work. So I think there's, there's some compromises here, and what I'm suggesting by the towns working together, but not actually, um, being forced to do so by the state, behooves us by putting us in the driver's seat. I think we are, the state has been talking about it literally for decades. I think we are moving to probably county-level assessment, or some kind of regional assessment district. If you can kind of form those on your own and work in cooperation with other towns, you're driving that train. And this is the exact same spiel I gave to Chittenden last night. Drive the train rather than, than it being, um, put down on you in a heavy-handed way from the state. And I'm trying to advocate for the PBR not ever doing that, but I'm, I'm not in control of that.
So at this point, how does a board feel about moving forward with the RFP?
I take, I take Lisa's advice on it. I think we should go ahead with her suggestion.
I mean, we go to request for a proposal that doesn't, we're not committed to anything, we're just getting it out there, see what the numbers are, so. Do you want to make that?
Uh, just to clarify, the question was asked earlier, are we committed to selective bidder? In the draft RFP that I've been working on, there's language right in there that we, the town reserves the right to reject any and all bidders, um, if we're, if we're not happy with the proposals we receive, so.
Right, that's, if we, if we're not satisfied with any of them, we don't have, we're not committed to any of them. Okay.
Right, right. No, not until you make the contract, you're not committed.
Then I guess we phrase this as a motion. Um, I'll move that, the town issue an RFP for our reappraisal.
No, second that.
And, and Lisa will write the RFP for us?
Yeah.
You have a motion on the floor? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Lisa. We appreciate it.
All right.
Appreciate your coming, coming to the meeting tonight and helping us through this, and you can get started.
Thank you, all get to work.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Have a good day.
Announcements? Is there any announcements? I guess not. Reports?
I thought she had an announcement about the Peg TV.
Excuse me?
Peg TV.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's in the updated one, here. This is the announcement from Kristen. Peg TV has been granted funding for permanent fixtures in the Politt Town Hall. Project plans to continue in 2024.
Thank you. So that's, that's all, that's all good, so you won't have nowhere near the work you're, you're used to now. Perfect. Zoning Administrator?
So I've put in each of your boxes a draft, a working draft ordinance for the short-term rental program. It contains the ordinance, it also contains a copy of the draft registry, as well as the, um, fire and safety regulations dictated by the state for short-term rentals. As I said, this is just a working draft. I'd like you to all take the chance to look at it. Perhaps we can discuss it in detail at the next meeting, and then, once you approve it, we still have to go to a public hearing, because it is an ordinance, so I don't see it really getting voted on probably until early spring. So it's a work in progress that I need you to review, because it does have to come from the select board.
Thank you.
And that's all I have?
That's it? Just make sure we go through our boxes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Nancy? Thank you. Planning Commission?
Um, no report from the Planning Commission, but I do just want to, um, say that I think last meeting, when I said we were going to be having a hearing, I had said it would be on the first of January, which the Planning Commission has moved because of the holiday. The hearing is going to be on the 28th of December for the updated town plan, and that it has been warned, and you should be seeing the posters, I mean, the little flyers around. It's on to Mac porch for, and it's in the Rutland Herald, so, yeah.
Okay. Bill Foreman?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. So we're in the process of getting some updated pricing on Crusher Run. So if we have opportunity this winter, we'll start to haul in and stop piles from Crusher Run. So, if we have opportunity this winter, we'll start to haul in and stop piles and crush and run. Cut it hard for it. Uh, they're continuing to put new road signs out, working on putting a plan together for summer projects for this upcoming summer. The Dodge 5500 is headed to get some recall work done on the brake lines. I think it's Thursday or Friday of this week. The 2017 and 2013 Max, the 2013 went to Earl's to get some engine brake work. There's a bunch of other issues with it that they, they cleared and solved, and the 2017 is scheduled to go there. Let's see, the Thursday and Friday of this week. And that, that truck as well had a bunch of issues, the codes and, and other issues. Earl's did a great job in the 2013, I expect they'll do the same on the 2017. So, other than that, they're just doing winter work, they're doing some roadside cleanup. Uh, there were some dead trees throughout the summer that got taken down and were just piled up along the ditches, and they're cleaning that up, so. Yeah, that's.
You got three men on the crew again?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Anything from the assessors?
Well, we did, we did hear from the assessor at the beginning.
But no, no other report. Town clerk's memo?
Um, yeah, I need you as a board to make a motion to approve the tobacco and second-class licenses for, I think I put it in the memo, Max Market LLC and Sheldon's Market Corporation. The state turned that authority back over to the towns last year. So, it just needs to be a motion to accept the, the tobacco and second-class licenses for those two places of business.
I would need to be individual motions to probably would make it cleaner.
Yeah.
So, does somebody want to make those motions where we're right here?
Sure. Um, so separately?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the tobacco and second-class license for Max Market LLC.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
All right, and then we, I'll move that we approve the tobacco and second-class license for Sheldon's Market Corporation.
I'll second that.
Can be quicker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Okay. And I just gave you a little handout that we're starting to get stuff from various entities with regard to the upcoming elections, and I will pass on things that I think you should know. Also, it's not on my memo, but Frank came in this morning, or this afternoon, and was talking about the use of the auditorium for a planning commission event.
The optional event we were talking about.
Okay.
It would be far in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, most people.
But it brings up a question that he had and that I couldn't answer. The contract that we have for renting the town hall auditorium, or the use of the town hall auditorium, does not state in that contract the maximum capacity for the use of that room. And I think that it's probably a good idea to see if we can get, like, you know, the fire departments to come in. I think we did at one time, but I don't remember.
Sue?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, a piece of paper that says maximum capacity. I think it's upstairs in the auditorium.
Upstairs, there is one in the auditorium?
Yeah, 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 Mike, Bob Marlinow took it years ago.
Yes, that, that would be a very important thing to have stated on the contract.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and it was a good point that was brought up in the conversation with, with Frank today, so.
I can look for it tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, well, well, I don't know who created this contract. If it is in my computer somewhere, I can make the change, otherwise, I may have to type the whole thing over, but that's not a big deal.
Okay.
Okay.
Kristen may know about where that, where that's, if there's a.
Where the original is located, okay.
Some of that can be adjusted, excellent.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, and Merry Christmas to you too.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Deb? Okay.
Got to remember what I said now.
Treasures memo?
Two warrants this week. Payables $8,590.51. The count's payables $51,702.52. Um, that, the breakdown is general fund 37, 245.50, highway 15, 645.89, and waste water 74, 01.64. I just want to update the rest of the board, but I had a meeting with the liaison to my office, Jessica, and we discussed the sets, grants, how to proceed with the ARPA funds transferred into the general fund, what funds we currently have, the restrictions that are on those funds, and we had a discussion on if we should adjust or establish new funds. We also talked about the financial policies that we should be working on in the future. And basically just to update, like, so we had that talk, we've identified our next steps, and we're both continuing to work on this. And then, other than the motions on the warrants, I do, we do have a couple of things to adjust on the budget, and then I want to go tonight on the numbers.
Okay. So, the last we do, we were talking about bridge.
So, in highway, we had the bridge guardrails, and I'm wondering if we have any anticipated grants. Like, last, the last two years, we've had the grants and aid program, so I don't know if that means we're probably not going to get it this year, or if we have a paving grant that we know is coming, and we've talked about doing paving, but I don't remember.
Yeah, we don't even know if we're going to get that, so. We hope that we will.
Right, so we'll leave paving out, but is there, like, a better back road or grants and aid or anything?
Pretty much every year.
We do for the, the hydroly, hydrologically connecting roads.
Yeah, and we have enough of those, we can do that every year for sure.
So, that's been about 20,000-ish?
I don't remember.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what Kelly Hill was, and we didn't end up with this last one. Okay, so I'm going to.
In my Eric book, that was same, same type of project.
And those are projects that we would, we would be working on a specific stretch of highway anyways, so we can go ahead and use that revenue without offset. Okay. So, I answered that. And so next, we have bridge and guardrails to discuss.
So, the bridge we have to do, we're scheduled to do that.
Do you want to? So, I can put it in the budget as anticipated $200,000 revenue and anticipated $300,000 project cost?
Yeah, so we're on the hook for right around 100.
Okay. Do we want to, Jessica has the ARPA figures, I know you've talked about using that for guardrails.
I will pass this out. So, this is the numbers where we're at right now. So, along the top, we've got the original amount we got for ARPA, which was just over $409,000. And then, we spent some for wastewater offsets, that was just to bring down the cost for the wastewater plan. We got the Owl, we did a survey, and then we did some stormwater project in West Pollock. That means as of right now, we have $350,658.08 remaining. We were planning to use a thou, $100,000 of that as match for the sidewalk grant. Julie has suggested setting aside an additional $40,000 match for the sidewalk grant in case it goes over budget. And then, that leads us, leaves us with $210,658, which is left. And the, we had wanted to use a chunk, a good chunk of that as seed, the matching funds for the next wastewater project. So, I guess it's up to us whether we want to not keep that whole $210,000 for the matching for wastewater thing, or if we want to use some of that for the bridge. That's, that's the numbers we're at now with that.
And there's $80,000 right now to pay that, that we could use for that bridge if we chose, correct?
Because we don't anticipate using that in the current fiscal year.
And the contractor also is willing to take payments after the next fiscal year. For like the last remaining piece, if need be.
Okay. So, I thought we had talked about doing the bridge as the revenue and expenditure, but in this next year. But if we're going to pay like $80,000 on it, then I could put it down, the expenditure portion just to 220.
That sounds like it would make sense. And we're not using that paving, for any paving?
We have a chunk of money that's in this year that we're in right now, that's $80,000, and we can pay that in this year, but we need to figure out how to budget for next year. So, if we pay $80,000 on the $300,000 project and we get $200,000, then we would be able to reduce down right now.
There'd be 20 left.
Right.
So, if we could take out of the following year.
That will be in the following year.
Right. And the contractor's okay with that?
Okay. We could either budget that in the following year as, do we have a line item for bridges?
I'm going to create a line item, I have a school street bridge.
Okay.
So, before we do this budget tonight, we could add another portion of money to, to cover the bridge project, which would come up in January of '24, and that would cover the remaining portion of the bill from, on the project, correct?
Right, that's what we're trying to do.
That's what I thought, okay.
So, I have on the, the, the numbers, the one, I think it's in the middle, and all the numbers start with 12. And it should be in yellow on the first page of that. At the top, there's the revenue, and I put in the $200,000 we anticipate from there. And then, as you scroll down, it's probably the, one of the last pages. And it's front and back. I have a line for the school street bridge, and I had on your version, 300, but I'm going to actually change that now to 220, because we're going to be able to pay 80 of it out of the current year. So, then, next, we want to know about the guardrails. Do we want to budget for that next year? Or do we want to use some of the ARPA funds to pay for it and not have it in our budget?
I don't think we'd want to use the ARPA funds for it. I mean, we, we've got those to spend. It's not like we're going to be doing guardrails every five years, or hopefully not every 10 years, or. I'm not sure when the last time they were done, but I'm sure it was, a lot of these are 30, 40 years old. That's, I mean, that's my thought. It is a safety issue. A lot of them were.
It was, it was what, $90,000 for the?
I didn't bring it with me.
It wasn't, I recall it being in the $90,000.
$93,000.
$93,969.
I'd be comfortable with using some of the remainder of the ARPA for it, though I do think that we should keep at least $100,000, and I prefer closer to $150,000 to be a match for wastewater, just because that was, when we did the survey, that was the top thing that folks wanted us to use it for. So, I think we should save some of it for that. And, and Julie and I talked about how, so we do have to obligate all of the ARPA funds in this next year, but we can obligate them, we talked about how we can do it. We can, we can basically put them in a particular fund for a particular thing, and that counts as obligating them. So, we don't necessarily even have to spend them that same year, as soon as we, yeah.
You know, all the guardrails don't have to be done this year either. We can, we can take, you know, half of those or whatever, and figure out which ones need to be done first, and do a section this year and a section next year, and whatever, you know, we all decide.
I mean, what if we said we were going to use about $50,000 for the guardrails?
We'd have to just pick out, you know, a few sections and, and see how close.
Pull 50 out, that still leaves 160 in, for, for the wastewater upgrade.
We take care of the ones that are going to keep people out of the river and the quarry.
I mean, I think that seems like a, I mean, it's clearly needed.
It seems like a fair compromise, probably. Do we want to put a, a line item in the budget for guardrails for the following year? Is that, it's not really something, it's not really something that we're going to need to spend that kind of money on every year, it's going to be much greatly reduced after we get it up to.
And that, right there, is all the guardrails on the blacktop. I mean, there's other places where, you know, we could use some guardrails, but that's replacing the ones that, all the ones that are existing.
Well, if, if we did want to get them all done, we could use the ARPA for 50,000, we could start those whenever, right? That can be done before the fiscal year because we have those funds. And then, if we wanted to put the remainder, what would it be, 40, into the budget for the next fiscal year? As a one-time thing, we could do that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's basically, it's the same as one person's salary. And like you said, it's needed.
It probably makes the most sense.
Yeah.
And then get it done, and then we could, then hopefully the following year, we could pull that.
And at this point, they can't do, they're not going to do the guardrails till next spring anyhow, so.
Maybe we could arrange it so that they, they did it all at once, and then we could kind of, right around, right around the change in budgets, so the money.
Yeah, one question I didn't ask, if, if they're going to try, you know, there's going to be a premium if we split those up.
Right. How much, how much of a difference it's going to be over the days and twice and stuff like that. So, right now, do we want to, do we want to put that in the form of a motion?
Do we need to make a motion for everything on the budget? Because then we're just going to, we're going to vote on the budget.
Okay.
So, does it sound like we want to put a line item in for, what's the name, 40,000 for the guardrails? Is that?
It would be 40, it would be basically 44,000.
Okay.
44?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the only thing, I guess if they're going to come and do them all at once, it doesn't matter. But if we're going to come up with a number, it's going to have to be precise, because every section's a different number. I don't have that in front of me, but, you know, you'd have to get a calculator and add those up. It might be 56.
So, but this, we're talking about covering the whole shot, because we're going to use 50 of ARPA, which we already have, and then we're going to.
And then just not doing it until after the fiscal year?
So, are they going to start this coming, like, spring of '24 or spring of '25?
Spring of '24.
So, we don't have, we can't, we can't make those monies come from anywhere?
And we're not trying to, we're not trying to. We've got the ARPA funds, or we could do the first phase with right now. But if we're going to come up with a number, it needs to be an exact number, because we've got 10 numbers here as an example. One section is 17,728.
So, you can borrow from ARPA funds that you haven't expended and then make that hole in the next fiscal year?
Well, there you go, that makes, that's straight.
All right, then that makes it easy. So, what, 44? Yeah, 44.
So, now, can you just recap what we just talked about?
Sure. So, we just, we decided to, that we've had about $80,000 of funds in the current fiscal year that we will be able to use towards the bridge. In the next fiscal year that we're budgeting for tonight, we will have a $200,000 revenue for a grant that we anticipate, or that we've been awarded, and $220,000 in expenditures to cover the remaining amount that we will need to pay next fiscal year. We also are budgeting $44,000 for guardrails, and we will be using $50,000 of ARPA funds to pay the difference on that guardrail project.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
Congratulations. You understand that? Frank?
Are they going to bill per section, or are they going to bill at the end of completion?
It depends on how we want them to do it. They will bill per section. If we wanted to come do three sections, they'll bill them individually, but they may charge a premium if they have to come back, you know, three or four times, or twice, or whatever the case may be. Uh, but it's all individualized per section on that estimate.
But to do the job all at once?
May I approach?
Do we have?
May I approach?
Yes.
I think you guys, it might like be easier to see, so let's be adjusting numbers. Here's your budget. Here's your budget. Did you wanna?
Forty-five percent.
Okay, um, full budget, right here, just that one. The only other thing we have to deal with for budget then is, um, uh, in general fund, Judy had requested adding money for.
Christmas tree lights. Two hundred bucks.
Yes, I think we can do that.
Okay.
Is there a spot that we can do that and just make a line? Okay, perfect.
Okay.
We all good with that?
Okay.
So just, just a quick question, Julie. So when we see that whole budget there, that is the budget and it doesn't include the offsets from the revenue? So that two hundred thousand dollars that we're expecting to get in for the grant, is that?
Right, so, okay, excellent.
Just double checking, because we see, it looks like, in a way, like it's up quite a lot, but I know it's not up that much.
Right, so if you look, I'll show you.
Yeah.
So.
I figured that was the case, I just wanted to double check.
This is with anticipated revenues.
Okay.
Here. So I take the full budget number.
Uh-huh.
Plus the anticipated amount of money to spend. Patreon.
Uh-huh.
And it's gonna be more like that.
Okay.
Right, so I take the full budget number and then I subtract all these other revenues and that's what we would.
So, okay, so it's closer to the top. Okay, yeah, that makes much more sense, thank you.
You might not want to call them the Christmas lights. You might want to call them like decorating of the green or.
I didn't, I had them as, uh, green lights for the green.
Okay, that makes sense, because they are for.
The green.
Holidays.
Yes.
Okay, lights for town.
So then we would need a motion to approve the general fund budget of five hundred three, five hundred and three thousand eleven dollars.
All right, let's take turns with these. Somebody else do this one, I'll do one. I'll second it.
Bob did it first.
Yep.
Bob. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
And I need a motion to approve the highway budget. Nine sixty-one eight fifteen.
Nine sixty-one eight fifteen.
I'll do that one. I move that we approve the highway budget at the amount Julie just read.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
And then I don't believe you guys have made your motion.
No, they have not, they have not.
For warrants.
Warrants, we have not yet.
Okay. I need to get the figures though. And I gotta go back. Okay. So two hundred, thank you.
You mean on the details? I don't think you need the detail of what we did.
No, I just need the warrant.
I've got it right here for you.
Okay.
I'll move on it and then.
Okay, all right.
I'll move on payroll warrant, two four zero two nine for eight thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and fifty-one cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
I'll move on the accounts payable warrant, number two four zero three zero for fifty-one thousand, seven hundred, two dollars and fifty-two cents.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Colored? Carried.
Gotcha.
Sue?
When's the bridge gonna be closed, school street bridge?
Excuse me?
School street bridge, when is it gonna be, is it gonna be closed?
When is it gonna be closed, do you think?
Give or take.
Uh, April-ish.
Of twenty-four, okay.
For about a one month window?
Yeah, I don't have that.
You know, it's month, it's month season anyway.
And they have, they have said that they're going to check when the school buses come through and they're gonna reopen it at the time when the school bus has to come through.
Oh, okay.
They work it out that way.
Okay.
It's just closed, uh, for the working period, but it'll be open at night. So we don't have to take the two-lane temporary bridge.
That's the hope.
I'm not going in.
Are you all set, Julie?
I'm done.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Thank you. I didn't include it, but have holidays to everybody.
Anything for the emergency management?
I wasn't given any, Bob.
And the town health officer. Jennifer, do you have anything tonight to add?
Uh, the only thing I have to announce is that the infamous trailer on, uh, camper, excuse me, on one fifty-three in Westellis is gone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all your work on that, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Oh, Nancy too.
Good, Nancy.
Wastewater, there was a story that came out and I think she just, with all the, there wasn't any, anything other than just a DMR, sorry, did you see that?
Yeah, I did see that, it was just the.
The usual update.
Just the usual update and it didn't even. They removed a pump sludge, um, brought to Rutland, did a monthly samples, did the UV, installed the wares. This is all stuff that they done in, in eleven, in November. Fire extinguisher certified, that's extinguishers, submitted to DMR and A and R online, performed proficiency tests, submitted, uh, okay, October DMRs, now, November DMRs, taken monthly DEC samples and sludge samples to Rutland Courier, monthly December samples and taking second post UV grab to West Rutland. Outstanding items, transfer switch needs to be worked on, the right-hand heater, and I talked to Jake about that today and he thought he would probably try and get that in February, it looked like he would be able to get that. And they also, the heat, the evaporator for here is, is a little bit weather dependent, if it gets too cold, he may not be able to put the evaporator in. Yes, the time is, time the weather for this evaporator for upstairs. One manhole to be repaired, um, controls update and spruce gum and transponder. And there's all the rest of the reports. So, no, nothing, nothing outstanding going on at the sewage treatment plant. Facilities report, anything going on?
Frank and I were able to take the ladders up into the attic here in Town Hall and over in the library and take photos for that, um, the energy inspection.
Okay.
So we sent those out and the update, just a minute, Frank. And the update on that is that we are now waiting back for the report to come from those energy inspectors. And I just talked this today to Rutland Regional Planning Commission on the phone and they anticipate that the grant funding that is unlocked by those inspections will be available probably next fall. So we have to get the data back from the inspections, they have to get the data back from all the inspections they're doing in all the places in Vermont, the different towns, and then they'll decide about awarding those grant fundings. We should be pretty high on the list for those grant fundings, but we won't know till later in twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Excellent. Frank?
The access off the stage to this roof attic space here is if you don't have somebody with your foot on that bottom ladder, it slides out, it would be trouble. And I was wondering if somebody could look at that and maybe put a hook system up there just as a safety catch for a run on the ladder, so if it did fall off there, it would stop it and it wouldn't go all the way to ground, somebody could get really hurt. That would be just a simple safety thing.
Okay. Harley?
The contractor came and looked at the library, but I recorded on the last meeting. I'll be right back, I'll be back tomorrow. I think it's a matter of, um, uh, every step has to be, um, encouraged, so I have neglected to do that. I will get on it. This is for the roof repair for the leak.
Okay.
Although the pictures from the, uh, pictures that Jessica took in the attic and lived, does show a little bit about what the terrain is, the, um, well, it doesn't show exactly the problem. You can see daylight, but it doesn't look like it's daylight through the roof, it looks like it's.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Meadowwee Valley, nothing this week? School report?
We had a meeting here in the Town Hall upstairs last night, but I did not get a report.
Okay, for the next meeting then, okay, thank you. Older unfinished business, the Meadowwee Valley park?
Okay, so regarding the Meadowwee Community Park, that's the one that's just, um, over the township border with Rupert, and it's, uh, right now it's a dog park basically, or used as a dog park. So there was a group of people who'd been discussing earlier this year if various towns might get together to, um, to work on it. And the, um, I'll just read you what was sent in an email to me. The, "What is at stake? The park currently serves the towns of Rupert in which it is located, Dorset and Paulette. If none of the three communities vote to take on responsibility for managing, ensuring, and maintaining the park, Vermont Land Trust," and I've, I've got this for you guys as well, "Vermont Land Trust will recommend to the farmers owning the underlying land that they remove park infrastructure to protect their personal liability. Presumably the land will go back into farming since it will remain conserved." Basically, the group that was taking care of it before for many years is defunct, it no longer exists, nobody is part of that group anymore. So what is the opportunity? If all three of the communities vote to cooperatively manage the park, or some part of the group does, Vermont Land Trust will allow for the park's permanent community use and it could lead to a new era of neighboring towns sharing the responsibility. Grant funding that has been tidying the landowners over on maintenance and insurance will run out by next summer, so this really needs to be decided on town meeting day or before. Vermont Land Trust proposes a new lease agreement with whatever towns want to participate, if any do, although because the land is in the town of Rupert, we will look to them first for their preference. So they suggest that we put a town meeting, an item on town meeting ballot that says something along these lines. Should the town of Paulette Select Board be empowered to enter into a mutually acceptable joint management agreement with the town of Rupert for the long care, term care, maintenance, financial responsibility, and governance of the Meadowwee Community Park? And they would ask Dorset to also put that on theirs. Dorset has indicated that they'd be willing to go it alone for up to a year, but that they don't really want to permanently, um, take on the responsibility for this park. So, um, we don't have to make a decision on this right now, there's gonna be some more conversations that this group, mostly, there's a guy from the Land Trust who's been talking to Dorset and to Rupert and to Paulette. And, um, because we're not at the deadline yet for putting things on town meeting ballot, but I just wanted to bring this up as something that they would like to put to the people of the town, if the people in the town want to continue to take care of that particular park, or if we want to let it go back to be conserved farmland.
So I have a couple things to say on that. Currently, the organization that you're saying is defunct.
Mm-hmm.
Which I was going to be looking into that prior to the town meeting and preparing the ballot. They were a five oh one C three organization.
Yes.
So we can remove that item from the ballot?
Yeah.
Because they're, they were an ongoing, because they were approved every year. If this organization, would this be like an article that the board puts on or would they need to get a petition to have an article on? It sounds to me like they would need to petition the town, so that means signatures.
Well, this would be, I think this would be one that they're asking the Select Board to put on if we choose to. Because if, if, if the towns of Paulette and Dorset and Rupert enter into a mutual lease agreement on this, it would be the Select Board who would need to budget whatever that would cost. Right? So, the, the idea is that instead of it being this five oh one C three, which is not doing anything any longer and evidently has no more members, right? That instead of it being that, it would be a community park owned and run by three towns. So it would be a municipal matter then, not a five oh one C three. Yeah, the people talking about it are, um, representatives from the planning commissions or select boards of those three towns and someone from Vermont Land Trust and one of the farmers.
So there would be a transfer of ownership, like a, a property transfer?
Not, I, again, I don't know the exact details on it because it, it's currently conserved land and it was leased out to this five oh one C three.
Right, right.
Um, to be used as a park. But since the five oh one C three sort of stopped operating or doing anything, Vermont Land Trust was like, what's going on? No one's maintaining this property. So the Vermont Land Trust is trying to figure out, it's basically been, this whole thing has been spearheaded by the Vermont Land Trust, because the land is conserved. So it will be conserved one way or the other, either as farmland or as a park. And they just want to see if the communities want to maintain the park or if they want to let it go back to farmland.
Frank, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um, I think we were voting a certain amount of money every year to that five oh one C three. Is there a bank account that's still alive or was that money paid to the Land Trust?
I don't know, but I can find out. I can ask the Land Trust guy.
The check didn't, not clear. So as far as I can recall, the check did clear. It would have been issued in October.
Okay. All right.
I can certainly double check that it did clear, but I think it did. It was definitely made out to the five oh one C three if they turned over somehow ownership to the Land Trust and they were able to cash it, I don't know, I don't.
All right, I can, yeah, I can ask if the Vermont Land Trust has been getting that money.
Because the last I knew, they were using, they were continuing to use the funding, because I asked last year about keeping it on the ballot, because, you know, Dale used to be part of that group.
Yeah.
And he said, well, we do use, we do have to keep it as a maintenance, so somebody's keeping it maintained as far as mowing.
Yeah, and Vermont Land Trust was able to get a grant to pay for the additional maintenance, the maintenance of the mowing beyond what was covered in what, what we voted them.
Okay.
So, but like they said, that, that grant money that they've gotten to maintain it is gonna run out next summer.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that what we vote them doesn't probably come close to covering what they're paying.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, what do we vote them, like a couple hundred?
Five hundred, it's five hundred.
But yeah, I can look into that.
To Deb's question, the farmers would still own it because it sounds to me like what the Vermont Land Trust is suggesting is a new lease agreement. So leasing it, but the farmer would still own it.
Okay. Any other old or unfinished business? New business?
Was there something else on old business?
No, there's.
Oh, the cannabis, that's an old business, yeah. Okay, let's do the cannabis one and then I can, we can do mine.
Any documentation?
There was an email, but it hasn't been printed out.
Okay.
Let's see if I can pull it up. We can't out loud say. We can't out loud say the address, that's not allowed. Request for publication.
Did you see that at all or not? Application.
That's the stuff.
Do you want, you send it to the printer? You can.
She sent it today.
I do have Wi-Fi, I'm not sure if I can.
Is she here today or not?
Let's see.
I didn't see anything today.
See if it finds a printer.
Epson.
And there it is.
Couple days ago, no? Okay.
Oh, I'm going to enable Wi-Fi direct printing.
Okay.
It's searching.
Indoor cultivator has been approved.
Which one is it?
It's not H.P. Doesn't even show the Epson on here.
Okay, then maybe I can't print it from my phone, sorry. Yeah, it's just H.L. Enter H.P.
I talked to Nancy about it. Nancy?
The printer might come up as Tascampa.
It's not showing that.
It's not showing up, so we just, we have the email, however, right?
You have it too?
I do have it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So here, we can.
Basically, it's an indoor row facility.
This is the email. I've already looked through it, so if you want to look through it, go ahead.
The question is, because it's.
The wonders of technology.
So Nancy couldn't see anything, other than we were trying to make sure there's nothing going into the waste stream. And according to what they say right here. Makes a small quantity, it's using hardly no liquids or any gardening activity, it's contained in use. Don't really see.
Nancy got it? Okay.
They really don't see.
Right there. And I think that might be printed up there.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. And Nancy and I talked about it today. That's just right here, is her story.
Mm-hmm.
It's all organic, fertilizer that they're using.
Okay.
She said that nothing gets into the waste stream.
All right. Yeah.
That was the only question that Nancy had. Everything else seems to be in order.
Okay. Yeah, looks fine to me, too. I'm trying to remember, we've done a few of these, do we make a motion to approve it?
We make a motion to approve it. Nancy?
There is no effluent issue.
Excuse me?
There is no issue with effluent from this facility.
Right, yeah. That's what I was just showing them what, what I just saw, so.
If you receive.
Nothing gets, nothing gets into that waste stream, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So I'm trying to remember, do we move to approve it by the name of the company? And I know we don't say the address, but.
I don't think we say anything.
We don't say the na, do you remember Nancy? Do we say the name of the company?
I think you approve it by the application number.
Okay, let me find that here. Application number, okay, there is an application number here. S and a bunch of zeros, let me count these zeros. S and five zeros, 3375. You got that?
Yep.
All right. Indoor cultivator tier one, small cultivator, has been approved by the Cannabis Control Board, so I guess I move that we approve that application at the local level. What do we, what do we call it? The Cannabis Control Commission.
Struggle.
Yes, we approve it. I move that. We're still getting used to this.
Do I put that other thing that you said, the indoor cultivator?
Probably doesn't hurt. I can, is it on the paper here?
Yeah, is it?
It should be near the top of it.
Near the top, oh, yeah.
Do you have a second on that motion?
Who made the motion, Jessica?
I made the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry.
All right, my new business on the Housing Resource Navigator program. So this information was sent, you might have gotten it also, Mike, I'm not sure. It was sent to, to Select Board chairs and Planning Commission chairs. So I got it as a Planning Commission chair, and I've shared it with the rest of the Planning Commission. But I thought I would bring this along to announce it here. Rutland Regional Planning Commission is doing this thing called the Housing Resource Navigator Program. There's this little flyer they made, says, "All Your Housing Help in One Place." It's an optional program for towns in the Rutland region, which is at no cost to our towns and would be completed the end of 2024. Basically, what it is, is they are going to help hook up people who want to develop their lot, to put housing on it, or even to rehab vacant homes. And this can be public land, or it can be private land. So if someone owns a lot and they wanted to put a home to rent on it, or they wanted to build an accessory dwelling unit, or they had a vacant home that they wanted to rehab and sell or rent, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission would help find the housing sites and match the sites to developers who want to build. So this is, this is their idea, to help out anyone, public or private, who wants to build housing. And then, so there would be meetings between the town, the developer, and what they're calling the Housing Resource Navigator, which is Logan Solomon. So I've got a little flyer here, and I might leave this here in town hall, we can leave this flyer here. And basically, the town was going to have to decide, I think by early January, if we want to take part in this program at all. So I was, I was kind of hoping we could see if there was any interest among people in the town, if anyone wanted to get help with finding developers to build on sites. So I, that's, I'm just sharing that info.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other new business? Public comment? Marty?
Here's a special letter today to the board regarding the library. Do you want to read it? I just saw it, I didn't read it yet.
Like we said right along, this, this isn't a Select Board issue right at this point. We have consulted with our, our council, and we were hoping to have a statement for tonight, but she was unavailable to supply that for us.
Could you, at this point, inquire of the Chairman of the Library Board Trustees as to who their counsel is, and who's paying for that counsel?
We'll, we'll be in touch with our lawyer and, and talk to her about this. We'll, we'll send her a copy of this letter.
Then I would suggest, if you had watched the last Library Board meeting, which was heavily attended, the first part dealt with the dismissal of the director. The second part, which was not so widely viewed, because a lot of people left, showed a board that was really not complying with, or was not aware of its own regulations and Library Board standards for holding the meeting. And I would, I would suggest at this point, because this matter has dragged on and on with absolutely no public comment, in fact, no comment to Lindsay Barnes about why she was dismissed, absolutely nothing. We've gotten total silence on this, and I would suggest that she be reinstated on an interim basis for now, and that a mediator be brought in to iron this out, because this is one of the most unheard of dismissals that I've ever seen. And I've got a long history of working with all kinds of town boards and library boards. This is not the first one. And I have never seen anything like this. And inevitably, no matter what Merrill Bent might advise you, if legal action goes ahead, the town is going to be dragged into this, and he might successfully argue that.
We're working with this to make sure that we go about this in the right fashion. That's all I'm going to say at this point, okay?
Well, I would suggest that.
Well, I, I will make sure that. Your suggestion is duly noted. Thank you. Anybody else have any comment?
Could you read the letter that, that he just gave to you?
We're not, we don't have time to read the letter tonight, but I'm sure Mr. Kravitz will give you a pop to.
Okay.
I prefer that you did read the letter.
Go.
I would prefer that you did read the letter.
We're not going to read the letter tonight, we have to go into executive session. Yes?
Molly Beveridge, because of all these current links surrounding the Palet Library, I'd like to give you an overview of the board members that I don't think a lot of people have heard, and so you get a better perspective of who is on the Palet Library Board. Harley Cuddy is the Chair. He got his PhD in mechanical engineering, and he worked for 12 years as a professor at Virginia Tech while raising a family. He then worked as a research mechanical engineer and project manager at the Army Corps of Engineers in Hannahboro, New Hampshire, and also served on the Upper Valley Waldorf School Board. After he retired to Palet, he was appointed to the Palet Planning Commission.
Oh, but you're going to let her read this and you won't read the letter?
Excuse me, everybody gets two minutes.
She gets.
Thank you.
Catherine Lawrence is the Treasurer. Catherine grew up in Arlington, and she and her husband owned a dairy farm in West Palet for years. She has 22 years of experience in working in office management and financial oversight with executor, executive directors and boards at the nonprofit's Riley Rain Plymouth Forest. Grace Larson is the Secretary. Grace was born on the Larson Farm on the North Palet Road. She joined her father's appraisal business after college, also works in the primarie at the farm. She volunteered for years at a homeless shelter and is also Secretary of the Wells Park Committee. Joni Lee is a trustee. Joni lived in Germany with her husband during college and worked at her sister's Wells Country Store when they returned to the States. In 2009, they moved to West Palet, where they are raising their four kids. Joni has served on the Slate Valley Museum Board and is currently serving on the Board of the St. Paul's Episcopal Church in Wells. Heather Lund is a trustee. Heather has lived and raised her children here for 26 years. She's been a volunteer, a coach, a summer school teacher, and a patron of the library. She has worked as a special education teacher at Meadowwee Community School for 24 years.
We're about to run out of time, please.
I have one time paragraph, one more sentence. Every one of the people on the Palet Library Board is thoughtful and caring with high integrity, and each strongly believes in service to community. I think that none of the Board's decisions have been made impulsively or arbitrarily. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything?
I'd like to respond.
Yes?
I probably, myself, have more experience on library boards and trustees than all of those members combined. And while each of them might, might have a very credible resume, and they might be very nice people, I'm not disputing any of that, what's happened here is unheard of, and it's unjustified, because they have refused to state the reasons for Lindsay's dismissal publicly, or to her. They haven't given her a hearing, and the method by which she was dismissed is outrageous, particularly in a town like this. This is a small town. To dismiss someone by email, who's the Director of the Library, the first profession that this library has had. And by the way, I would also note that in the absence of a full-time director, things are not being taken care of over there, like leaks in the roof, and repairs that go for months and months and months. So there's, there's two ways of looking at this, and I would again encourage the Select Board to get involved in what's going on over there. So I'm asking you to approach the Library Board and make some kind of reconciliation, at least in the interim, and then bring in a professional mediator if you have to, and get this thing straightened out, because something crazy is going on over there.
Anybody else have any other comment?
I just want to say I agree with Marty, so that's all.
Thank you.
Can I say just a little something? I won't say anything legally, anything, but I mean, I think it's obvious how much this issue is important to people in the town. I mean, we've seen at the last couple Select Board meetings, how many people showed up. I wasn't at the meeting of the Library Board, but my wife Ruth was, and I watched it afterwards on PIG TV, and the amount of people who were there, that's a lot of people, and a lot of people care a great deal. And this is an issue now that's becoming difficult in our town, right? There's, there's a lot of bad feelings that are happening. And it is true that the library staff, while subject to the Library Board of Trustees for their employment, are paid out-of-town funds, so the town does. I agree personally, I agree with everyone who says the town does have an interest in this. And we have had an executive session with our town lawyer, Merrill Bent, and we have talked about options that the town has to go forward. And we haven't made a firm decision yet, but I want, this is me personally, I want the town to do something, right? I don't think this is a situation where the town can just sit back and twiddle our thumbs and say, we hope it looks good. That's me personally. And so I, I did ask, I asked Mike, and he mentioned this earlier, if there was any sort of.
I won't say anything legally, anything, but I mean, I think it's obvious how much this issue is important to people in the town. I mean, we've seen it the last couple select board meetings, how many people showed up. I wasn't at the meeting of the library board, but my wife Ruth was and I watched it afterwards on PIG TV. And the amount of people who were there, that's a lot of people and a lot of people care a great deal. And this is an issue now that's becoming difficult in our town, right? There's, there's a lot of bad feelings that are happening. And it is true that the library staff, while subject to the library board of trustees for their employment, are paid out of town funds. So the town does, I agree personally, I agree with everyone who says the town does have an interest in this. And we have had an executive session with our town lawyer, Merrill Bent, and we have talked about options that the town has to go forward. And we haven't made a firm decision yet, but I want, this is me personally, I want the town to do something, right? I don't think this is a situation where the town can just sit back and twiddle our thumbs and say, we hope it works out. That's me personally. And so I, I did ask, I asked Mike if, and he mentioned this earlier, if there was any sort of public statement yet that the town could make based on our interactions with Merrill. And Merrill hasn't been able to give us one yet. So we want to make, we want to make a public statement about this as soon as we can and we want to, I want to take some kind of action.
Martha, you have your hand up.
My name's Martha Scherdmann, Mr. Chair and members of the select board and my community neighbors and friends. I attended the meeting of the college library board of trustees on December 5th. I listened intently and impartially to everyone who spoke during the public comments section at the beginning of the evening and then I returned home. I would like to share some thoughts. We heard that there are laws that protect the hiring, managing and firing of employees. As a consequence and on advice from legal counsel, the board chair and the other trustees were not able to answer questions regarding the recent dismissal of our library director. In my opinion, this constraint has had serious ramifications in our community. It has led to unsubstantiated assumptions on the part of some college taxpayers who spoken at the select board meetings on November 14th and 28th and some who spoke at the library board meeting on December 5th. Even more regrettable, the requirement for the library board members to remain silent has led to distrust on the part of some community members in the actions of the board and of individuals of the library board. As a volunteer myself for another college organization, I understand how much time and energy these volunteers offer in service to our library and our community. I'm saddened that they are currently suffering from two sources of stress. One, there are legal limitations on their ability to explain the reason for their dismissal of our library director. And two, they have become objects of criticism, sometimes hostile, expressed by their fellow citizens. Perhaps we could strive for more patience, kindness and gentleness while the library board reviews its protocols and its actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha?
I agree that this is the most frustrating situation I have ever been involved in. I do not know the law like I know other subjects. Tomorrow evening, we are meeting with a council to, and one of the questions I want to understand is what can be said publicly? And if, if the board is requested by Ms. Barnes for why she was fired, what can we tell her? And then I will know. But I totally am empathetic with the citizens who say this is frustrating, why did this happen? Why did this happen? Why did this happen? And I understand the frustration, but to say something, you can't call it back if it turns out to be the wrong thing to say. So I will learn tomorrow evening in the executive session at a library board meeting, what can and can't be said and the best path forward. I'm an open, communal kind of person discussing things, but when it comes to an employee's embarrassment, my belief is praise in public, criticize in private.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add one thing regarding the meeting tomorrow night. I got the agenda by email today and they have allocated exactly five minutes of their time for a public comment tomorrow night. How do you reconcile that when the last meeting drew 45 people, which is probably more than you've ever seen in the library at one time? And they've allocated exactly five minutes for public comment. You give us two minutes each. Now do the math, if even half of those people want to say anything, how are they going to jam that in to five minutes of public comment? And it goes right back to the same question, what is so top secret? Why is it that Lindsay Barnes is being not...
We've already discussed all this and, and we know where everybody stands. We want to resolve this issue, but there are certain things that we can't say at this point.
I get that, Mike, but...
We're going to do the research and we're going to move forward with the proper research behind us. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment about this tonight? Okay, does somebody want to make a move?
I'm going to motion, I'm going to the executive session.
First now, ladies.